All right, I'll call this meeting of the planning board of Village of Cold Springs to order. This is mostly just workshop stuff. We'll just jump into the minutes. So first minutes are August 8. I was not there and Hillary was not there. But we do have forum for those that were. So take whatever time you need to.
I vote them over. I'm okay with them.
Yeah, it needs well.
What's this whole section about talking shit about the chair?
That wasn't there, yeah.
No, it was the instrument chair.
We were storming the chairs up there. Do we like move to accept the minutes?
I think Ben has that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you moved to accept the the meeting minutes for August 8 as written.
I'll second.
Wow, sorry. I can't make, I guess I could make, I could make the motion. But, but I can't, I can't vote.
So you made the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to adopt the meeting minutes as written for August 8, 2024.
And I'll second those.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Hillary, I abstain. And I think Henry probably, there needs to be a, a one that you initial. Right, right, Jonathan?
Sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
That, a copy of the, of those minutes that, that Henry initials since he was chairing that.
Oh, sure, yep.
You guys, suggested spot down at the bottom?
Yeah, I think I've been doing it over the corner.
Just initial?
I usually do each page just to kind of affirm. All right, next is August 22nd, 2024. That was myself, Hillary, and Henry. Do not remember at all.
I guess 40 came and went. Sometime minute.
The third page, we start with applicant comment. Is the applicant identified?
What was that?
So here, third page, applicant comments, but I don't, do I have to go somewhere else to find who the applicant was?
This was for 40 Main Street.
Exactly.
So. Yeah, I mean, I guess technically you can look it up because it has the application.
I think it should be in there.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's fine. We can, there are pins floating around. If I can make it know. The applicant in this case was Jabadiah, is that right?
Josiah.
Josiah, sorry. What's your side of the thing?
It wasn't the wife? Josiah's name is that. Okay, that's cool. I mean, it could be both of them. Yeah. But I think he's. That's fine. Yeah. Just trying to remember. That's all right. I think his wife's name is Rachel.
Yeah, her name is Rachel. I ran them. Were they getting out straight? So on the, on the wellness spa. Just, I am relatively sure maybe people can remember, but I'm pretty sure I called out the need for the exterior lighting to be downcast. So that was the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Are you on August still?
Yeah, we're still on it, yeah, yeah. Okay, maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's what I'm remembering.
As far as I can remember, it's okay to me. Okay, one second. On the September one submitted is a really rough draft, but I'm not sure if you guys want to condition it on expectation. I'm not sure if that's something that you can do, but I did.
The 12th isn't your in-draft form, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
It's pretty good.
It's on there, yeah.
It's pretty good.
Let's say, in the middle of the second page on the 12th, are we doing the 12th?
Not for the 12th, no.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm almost, almost.
You have another copy of the 12th I don't propose. Okay.
Yep, that's yours.
It's all it from me.
Hillary, you want to make the motion to accept this?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to accept.
I guess with, with addition that you asked for.
Yes, with the addition of identifying the applicant of 40 Main. I move that we approve the draft meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because you're out, the previous minutes were approved by the three that were here. Hillary and I abstain.
The ones I initial?
Yeah.
Oh, did you? Beautiful, thank you.
Right, you want the 12th? 12th was the hearing for Belvedere. Hardly believe we first started talking about 40 Main in September.
Is this the final vote on Belvedere?
I don't remember if we had one or two.
There was a second meeting. No, I think there was more. I think it took a while to get through.
Well, I, I didn't include the first one because the first one, I think Henry disagreed and you disagreed based on the, well, some kind of conditioning with the road and the.
Oh, no, you're talking about the vote.
Yeah.
Because I voted against.
Yeah, but then we did it, well, now we, yeah, the board did it again.
Same meeting.
Yes, in the same session and you guys, and then I can't, but I remember Jonathan, he suggested if you guys needed more time at that moment to either come back to it because the public hearing was open and then you guys discussed it amongst yourselves. And it was between the public road, the private road, what's unfair to subject the applicant based on the conditions. I think you guys made another vote, which is why I erased it previously because there were two, two votes and there were four people present, so you guys didn't have majority.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I don't see that I was there. I don't believe you were there. I didn't hear your voice at least on the recording.
I think we ended at 4-1, right?
You might have, you might have called it. Is there one you called in?
There may be.
Yes, that's true, I think, but that was. That was when I was sick and that was more like December.
Oh, maybe this was.
Let me just, September, let's say during the 12th.
You're saying that I'm not?
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, also this was a draft, so.
Yeah, I think.
For September? Yeah, September 12th, as far as I can tell, I should, I should be.
You should look back, you might also look back in your email.
Oh, yeah.
I also think that like, we should, we should make sure to include when we do conditionally approve, probably just as a, just to make note of what the conditions were. Just to make sure that we, we have that documented in a second place. I know that. I think it's, it's material to the substance here. And I do, Ben, I do have some recollection that we started, we had a kind of a stutter start where we started to vote and then we kind of held back because it was clear we weren't going to get, we weren't going to get through something. We were going to get to a resolution and we paused and we talked about it. And then, but I, I do, I think you ended up saying no.
I ended up saying no.
I switched.
Oh, yeah, you switched, yeah.
This, this says that Hillary wasn't there, so it would be maybe 3-1.
But Hillary said. I believe I was there. I can go, I can go back and check it. All right. It's just this video is three hours long, so it took me a long time to compare it.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Jonathan, was your, Zoom has AI companion. What, you know, is that something that, that the municipality is allowed to use to help somewhere like as an administrative tool?
Hmm, um, yeah, I mean.
So I've been talk, I've been talking with lawyers all this week about, about AI limitations in business, so sorry to throw that at you. It's probably worth looking at because like that probably would help you out a lot. If nothing else, to have a written record that you could scan much faster than, than this, like.
Yeah.
And then at least you have something that's more easily traversable in a, in, like, of like what was said. Even if like it's, you know, even if it's a bad, even if there are parts of it that are like bad transcriptions, it would probably make it a lot easier for you to go through.
It should be an Australian AI.
Need to be a strain in AI.
You have to be an Australian AI.
Australian.
He's Australian, so it's going to just say Barbie and Andrew Rude.
Oh, okay, I get it.
All right, so I suggest.
Show me that one.
Yeah, well, let's show that one. I think we're not, we're not far, we're not far. And Jonathan, maybe you could just double check on the, as long as it's an administrative tool and not being used to compose any policy and/or official notes, then maybe it's okay. All right.
I can't even find the, it's possible the, the video where September the 12th isn't online at this point. Is that possible? It's there, right?
They're all, they're all there.
They should be, okay. I just, I can't get it on my phone right now. Okay.
All right, so. Hillary, I'm wondering, like, I know we're, we're, we have a lot of other things going on, but I feel like, like even the applicant that was here last time, starting new, could have benefited from some of the stuff you had included in that. So what do you think we have left to get the, the site plan review application?
I did a, I did a while ago, I did an update after we had our conversation and I sent it out to everybody. I'm not sure if I printed it out, but it's in my, sure in my email. Wait a minute, planning board 912, hang on a second, why is it there?
All right, I've got it here.
I don't see me.
Don't you hate listening to you? Are you, are you, are you, please see the.
I only see Ben.
Yeah.
I think there was only four because when Ben said he was voting, you said you were voting.
And I thought you called in.
I said, okay, I'm gonna vote four.
Yeah, I think they're.
That's possible.
But I think it was, was the one.
And usually Ben sits on the.
I think, as I recall, I think you called in and I think I forgot to check with you on the vote.
Okay.
So.
Oh, that's right, you called in.
But I don't know if it was that one, that's the other thing. I think, I think if it was tight, I would have checked with you, so.
Yeah, but that would have been just.
That was December, yeah.
I think it was more December. It was pretty healthy in September. It was when December hit, that's when everything went downhill. That's why I said that suggested.
Blame my daughter. Yeah, it's a bad idea. I'm, I'm next to a biohazard most, like, most days, so.
Like most new penny.
Yeah. Jonathan, did you happen to take a look at the, that amended one? It was sent Thursday, November 14th, I think, with the updated.
Um, I don't recall. One second.
I've got something to answer.
There's another, there's a new one on 1211. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not seeing it.
See the updated site. Plan draft.
What's the, what's the date on that?
12, your, your documents is 1210, but you sent it on 1211.
I think I probably did actually, because I remember there was two total, right? Two versions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I looked.
The second would have been, would have said in the file title.
Draft site plan and subdivision, submission 1210, 24.
Is there, is there more formatting to yours? Google sometimes does a terrible thing with, with Microsoft Word docs.
Maybe not. Maybe not. Because I didn't, I didn't know how it should be formatted, so it's more like bullet points?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I know I, I did a markup of one version.
You did, the first one, and then we had a conversation.
Okay.
We had the meeting and I made, I made some notes and then I did the revision.
Okay, yeah.
Updated, there we go, now I found it. Just as Kevin said. It's draft, underlying site plan, subdivision.
I just still keep putting stuff because I can't ever remember what.
UCS.
GD. D as in Derek. Here, Walter, Nancy.
UC said on. That name. And what's the password?
That's it. Then it's going to be asterisk, capital B for village. It's going to be asterisk village, 10516, asterisk.
10516?
And follow, yeah.
So, well, I think that strikes me as like this, this list is kind of a mix of resources to review and steps to follow.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if it would be useful to separate those out into two different lists and like, here are, here are resources that you may find helpful.
Let me get a pen. Someone come and do.
Oh, sorry, no, just take yours back, take yours. This is what you get for sitting next to me all the time. I just end up stealing your pen every.
I should bring two in the house. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think having two lists, one that is like supplementary information that might be, there's like, there's like two types of, there's two types of, there's like resources that you're referring them to. So like,
Right.
Go look at this form, go look at this chapter, go look at this X thing. There's a list of things that you're,
Steps.
There, there's a list of steps that like could be guides of like, okay, this isn't, this isn't exactly what broad strokes, this is how some applications proceed. And then, and then you have a list of resources that you are asking for, or they, that are typically useful to be provided. And so maybe those are, those are three sections that could be kind of separated out to help with organizations so that it's like.
Well, it's the guideline and steps, resources, and what's the third?
So like resources for them to go refer to.
Right.
And then there's resources for them to provide as a part of, as a part of.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
And, and then for, for all of those, just, I, I think, you know, make heavy use of, of offsets and bullets just to help with the visual, kind of like the visual delineation of, of the stuff that you're, that you're describing, but.
Okay, good.
Anyone else have?
I think I was trying to follow it in sort of a linear chronological
Yeah.
way, but certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say. Planning board, the first and third.
That, I put it in red.
Right, I know, I know, but you're gonna, you're gonna change that to the second board, right?
Perry, say, is that where we are?
I mean, this is where we are until we're not. So, so I would, I would just change it to what, what it is then. Great. Thank you for continuing to work on that. I think it's going to be super helpful.
So good.
Yeah.
Now, is, is it still the PCNR or we switch to the current?
Should be this, I think the current has, is missing some kind of, they're missing some kind of accreditation, right? Was there some reason why we weren't allowed to publish in the current?
Not, I'm aware of it, it could be the case, but I haven't heard anything about that.
Oh, okay, all right. So, okay, I, for some reason I heard talk of the, the current being used as well, but okay, no, that's, that's my imagination.
I mean, it could be possible that HCRV publishes them both, but it's also the HCRV, so.
Right, okay.
Those rogues. Any, any other?
No.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's move on to the two resolutions from last time. Trying to remember who, I'm pretty sure I made the proposal for the resolution for 47 Parrot, because there were so many, there were so many conditions that we had added. But I don't remember who seconded. Do you remember seconding that?
I don't, I don't remember. I might have done it.
This thing?
What was that? The, the January 6th, January?
Oh.
What do you have?
The 9th?
January 9th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there other, the date of adoption is today's date or the date when we?
Today's date.
It's today's date, okay.
7 or 40?
47.
Jonathan, I think that the, you, you wrote the, the proposal requires and includes one off-street parking space, I think. Is that in addition to the one already required? Because they were, they had, they had to have two, right? Total?
Right, so the, the proposal is just the accessory apartment, the property requires two.
I see, I see, okay. I see. All right, the, this proposal requires an off-street parking space, which was, which was provided, okay, gotcha.
Wait, I have a quick question just for clarity. On the resolution, when you guys are doing that, is it the motion to accept the site plan or the motion to authorize the resolution? And that's like memorandum?
There's a, there's, there's two, right? There's like, there's authorizing the village attorney to prepare the resolution. And there's a decision that we make about the application.
Which one is this for the resolution, so?
So in, in the meeting, we, we made two, we, we made one to approve, to vote on the, the application itself, whether to approve or not. And then we made another motion And then we made another motion, uh, to authorize the village attorney to prepare the resolution.
Right, so the important one, if you will, is the one where you're actually approving the site plan.
Okay, so this is documenting the approval of the site plan, not the authorization.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Henry, we're going with you as, uh, Hillary, Hillary, okay. Every second is forty seven here.
That's what she said.
Did, was there a, did we get a, um, a result, I shouldn't use the word, uh, did we resolve this, this, uh, the, the area, the square footage, because it was off eighteen feet?
Yes, we, we.
What happened with that?
We put in the condition, which is in here, that, uh, if you look at the, the, there's five conditions that are listed at the end. One of them is, uh, all necessary approvals as determined, as may be determined by the building inspector, including, but not limited to those related to sewer and water connections and square footage for this accessory apartment. Are you on, on the point for forty seventh parrot?
Yeah.
Situation.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep.
And, um.
So let me ask you.
Yeah.
At, at this point, at there, eighteen feet off, do they have to? And do we know, do we care at this point? Do they go to the village to ask for a waiver? Or does Ethan have to recon?
No, it's, it's, it is at the discretion of the building inspector.
Right, so I think it was, it was suggested that the plans may be eighteen feet up, but I don't think that's really, it's certainly not a determination that I can make. I, you know, I can't look at a set of plans and say, yes, this is the correct square footage. I think that's gotta come from the building inspector. And if the building inspector says, I think these plans incorrectly show the square footage, then, uh, they might have to reduce the size and come back or go to the Z B A.
Yeah, I think there is some trickiness on the square footage calculation insofar as, for ADUs in particular, accessory apartments, uh, they are, they, they can be in standalone buildings, they can be part of accessory, uh, accessory, uh, buildings. They can be the entirety of the accessory building, or they can be a part of the main, the main structure, right? And so there, there are, I think, some reasonable questions about exactly what, what of the accessory building should count? Like, if you had, um, if you had like a storage area that couldn't be accessed from the apartment, but it was part of the building, probably that shouldn't be a, a part. Like, well, then how do you count the wall? That they exist between them? So I, I think like, I know it's in some ways it's unsatisfying to have, uh, have that kind of ambiguity there, but I think in, especially in the case of ADUs, that there is, there is a little bit of ambiguity just in, in their nature, because it's like, okay, well, this is the A D U part of the house, uh, it's separated. Maybe there's a part that has a locked door or something that kind of separates it, like, well, does that mean we should consider like the laundry room that's on the other side of the locked door as part of the A D U? Or not? Like, uh, you know?
So the building inspector makes the decision, but let's just say, I'm curious, I'd like to find out what the outcome is. As a board, we don't know, we'd have to go.
Yeah.
Online?
Uh, I mean, you could, I guess you would look and see what the final, because presumably if, like, if I stand, like, uh, I guess I would end up stamping whatever had gotten approved by the building inspector. So.
You will.
Yeah. So, 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 yeah, I'll tell you. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what's on. Uh.
So in theory, they sort of said, we're going to ignore the garage and build a six hundred square foot thing behind the garage.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's up to us to figure out whether or not that, is that, is the garage being used as part of the A D U or is it being used as an accept, like, just a generic accessory structure for the main, for the main house?
But to, yeah, but yeah, to Henry's point, um, yeah, they definitely, as long as they met the setbacks, which I think they probably could have, they could have just stuck, uh, an extra six hundred square foot building on the back of the garage and kept the garage for their cars or whatever.
Somebody would have.
Or until they showed up with a sledgehammer.
Yeah, I, I think, I think unfortunately, you know, people don't realize how much flex there is in the code as written. And that if their neighbors are, if they're, if they do have neighbors who are trying to act in good faith, they should be thankful for it. Because there's a lot of ways in which you can, you're legally entitled to, to things that are not necessarily, uh, that your neighbors might not consider to be in good faith.
Yeah, the, um, the architect even provided a list in the plans of unusual uses, uh, that I got a kick out of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Garage fan.
For, for Ethan. Um, all right, so, uh, I think this is, this is good from my perspective.
Okay, and I was just gonna add to, one of the conditions that you'll see that we, we definitely didn't talk about it at the last meeting, we may have talked about it at one of the earlier meetings, and that's the rec fees. If you recall from six East Belvedere, whenever you add, uh, a new unit or a subdivision, you have to pay rec fees.
Yeah.
Um, and that's just something that's in the code, the board doesn't have discretion over it, uh, the planning board doesn't, the, the village board, um, mayor.
Village Board has that for ADUs too.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Great.
So, um, uh, it's really up to the village board whether they want to require the applicant to pay any rec fees, maybe it will be a small amount, given the fact that it's an A D U and not a new single-family home, but that's up to them.
I see. Is that list, is that condition in here anywhere?
It is, yeah, I think it's, I forget what number it is, let me see.
Hey, man, uh, re- recreation, number five, ten?
Oh, recreation, okay. Okay, sure. All right. Uh, sounds good. Fine. Does it have a do in red?
Yep, works for me.
Okay. Nope. Uh, I don't know what resolution number is, so. What?
Be helpful.
That's probably number one of, of this year, right?
Uh, makes sense.
Yeah, it is.
Look at that.
So that makes this number two. Easy. Uh, let's see here. For forty main, who, do you remember who made the motion there?
I bossed him and then Henry started taking over, but I'm thinking, yeah.
Do you remember?
Um, no, but my book does. Um.
What did we do?
This is.
Right after.
Remember Serena came and.
Oh, oh. Oh, this is about the parking spaces?
Yes.
Yeah.
This isn't about the gym?
No.
Oh, okay.
But it is, the gym is in.
Right, but it's not the gym was up, the gym was up front at forty main.
Right, right.
But this is not the gym.
Incorporating the gym.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you'll see in the conditions that, uh, your approval from the last meeting doesn't uh, encompass any kind of gym use in the back. If this goes to the building inspector and the building inspector says, yeah, it's okay to have some fitness equipment in the office space, then, then that's fine, but if the building inspector says, no, uh, the fitness equipment is a, a separate gym use, then the applicant will have to come back.
Yeah.
Um, I have a quick question. Oh, so I'm probably have your motion, um, Jesse, approval condition on future change. Sure. And the use of all parking requirements are met, signed and authorized, attorney to. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I made, I made a motion for that too.
And then, yeah, I, I have Hillary Hart for that second, and so, uh.
Thank you.
But, um, I did have a question for you, Jonathan. So, um, I love this is like in writing, especially for the resolution regarding forty Main Street and the gym is now a part of the site plan for the office parking situation. Would it be sufficient to provide the resolution in a meantime? I don't know if this is appropriate to talk about now, but would it be sufficient to provide an attempt to collect on both applicants?
So the, the gym is not part of the, the office space?
But it's on the site.
It is not, is, it is not enough, it's not part of the application, like, like, she was informing us about a, of, like, a, a way in which a room in the office space is gonna be used. There was, so there was not like a sub-application here.
Okay. So.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, continue.
No, I was just gonna say, so if the building inspector says that, you know, it's fine to have fitness equipment in the office, then, then that's fine, but it's still, still just an, an office space.
We don't know what the building inspector is gonna say, like, like, we basically just didn't want to get in in the way, if on the off chance that he decides that, 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 that they're intended utilization of the space as office with gym constitutes a mixed use, in which case there would be a new use or, or.
Thinking that, and maybe I don't understand how it works, but both of them are on the site, site plan, so if you were to stamp the plan.
I would, I can only stamp the plan if the conditions are met. And the conditions that are being, that are being met would be that the, the building inspector, code enforcement officer says, I see this on the site plan, I hear what the use is, I do not think that that constitutes an additional use of the site. So the, the use remains just office. From a, from a use perspective, there is, there is no gym use, there is just office use that makes use of, that has a, a part of it that can be used, gym.
Right, it's, it's basically, the, the, what's shown on the site plan, the gym equipment is basically just like furniture as far.
You're saying it's showing like a coffee bar, you wouldn't call it, you wouldn't call it a coffee shop. It would just, there'd be a coffee bar in the office.
Maybe, I, I mean, I'm open to discussing this later, I don't wanna hold anyone, but maybe I'm misunderstanding the orient, or the order of things that are supposed to occur. I think if I'm understanding correctly, the stamping is supposed to happen before it goes to the building department, which is why I'm confused. You know, you, you know what I'm saying? That the building inspector would okay this and then you stamp. And then does it go back to the building department?
Uh, well, in this case, they wouldn't be going to the building department unless they needed, um, building permits for something, because, oh, this approval really was, was for the parking. So they don't have any, any reason to go to the building department.
But they do need to, they do need to validate the site plan with chief, the code enforcement officer, because so unless, unless I get some indication, the code enforcement officer has approved the, 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 the site plan as being, continuing to just be office use. That I, then I, the condition hasn't been met and they can't sign and they can't stamp anything. So I, you know, I don't know what I should anticipate as being the, I, I don't know, is it gonna be an email or a, a, a memorandum or something from, from Greg?
Right.
To the office or, or sent, 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 sent to me directly, I don't know which, but.
What can I do?
Uh, we need, like, the condition asks you, like, that, that's one of the, you know, it's for everyone's knowledge about how the process works, it's like, the, you know, like when I stamped the Belvedere plan, like, there was a very explicit list of conditions that had to be met. And every day that the Belvedere guys text me, like, can you come and stamp the plan? And I would go through that list, and it was like, we have this, do we have this, do we have this? And we, well, we were missing this thing, like, we were missing the, the filing with the county. Like, well, I can't, I can't stamp the plan because the, part of the condition of approval was that it was filed, that the, you know, the writ, uh, and the, the plot were filed with these conditions attached to them with the county. And when they finally got me the proof that that had happened, and Greg asserted that it had happened, and, uh, Abigail asserted that, you know, that all her bills had been paid, then all the conditions were met, and then I was, then I was allowed to stamp this and say, okay, this is done. So, um, however, however the, however those conditions have to be met, if they're not met, I'm just not gonna stamp it, and we can't move forward.
Right, and I think it's important to remember too, that it, it's not the planning board's job to make sure the applicant fulfills the conditions, it's up to them, they have the resolution that says what they need to do, and if they need some help or clarification, that's fine, but the, the planning board doesn't have to chase them down to.
We don't have to chase them down, but it is on us to not stamp something that has not been fulfilled.
Right, exactly.
Does that help? Okay. Uh, the, the nice thing about those kind of interfaces is that you don't have to worry as much about how, how it happens upstream, because you could just say, well, I don't, I don't have the things I need to, to stamp this thing, because this, this has, this document says I need X, Y, and Z, I don't have Y.
No. Did we decide that you were granting a waiver for six parking waivers and then we were having?
Yes, so that is a separate thing.
Okay.
That's not with this resol, this resolution says, hey, we, we can't approve the amendment of the site plan unless these conditions are met. The condition is that they don't have any parking spaces and they need eight. So they need eight waivers, period.
Right.
We referred them to the village board.
Oh, we referred and said that we, we, we suggested that they only get six.
Exactly.
Right, that's right. So it's a resolution, and it, that, that doesn't have to say anything in here, we.
Exactly, exactly, because it's not our, it's not, it's not a condition that, like, it's not a dimension of our, of our approval of the amendment, because it's just our opinion about what's, you know, what's appropriate for the.
One hundred percent, yeah, that, that's a separate thing, okay, just wanna make sure of what I was reading.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate everyone being engaged on it.
When does it go to the village?
It's been sent to, to Greg, to Greg, uh, the, the, uh, the village board.
Oh, please.
Yeah. Number two. Uh, yeah, I wanted to just check in on, uh, Abigail on, on, um, we ha, have we gotten any updated materials from, or forty or fourteen?
From forty, fourteen is planning to submit for the two tomorrow and like Wednesday, I spoke with her over the phone.
For a Wednesday, right, and we have them scheduled for the first meeting in February, for hearing.
No, I think that's the G I S hearing.
No, no, the thirteen, the.
The first, the, the first normally scheduled, uh, planning board, I think, is, is that, right?
Yeah, the thirteen.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the, we don't, I, I know that, uh, I don't wanna open the whole can of worms of, of your trail, the G, the G I S, I just wanted to um, let you guys know about a broader coordination happening, uh, within the village, um, that the, uh, that the village board and the mayor are coordinating. So village board uh, approved contracting with Ted Fink, uh, who's, um, a Mercer professor of urbans, I'm not sure exactly what his, it's basically like urban policy, urban studies kind of thing, and he helped, he was, oh, a consultant on the rewriting of chapter one thirty-four. So he brought a lot of, you know, external expertise to how villages of our size and accomplish the goals that they, that they have through code. Um, so the village board has approved contracting with Ted to help kind of consolidate and puts, uh, it's not, doesn't replace any of our opinion or questions or like that, but to kind of put forth a consolidated perspective. a consolidated perspective for the village board, the mayor and and the um supplementary boards that are part of the village. Uh, the mayor has asked that we send Ted at at least a draft of our board's opinion by February first. Uh, that's obviously a tight turnaround. We had agreed to try to get individual opinions down and shared, I think, on the twenty seventh. So um uh, there's two things we can do. I can, I can take a stab at an early draft synthesis to send over to Ted with the heavily caveat, it's not final official uh, has not been, it's not been vetted by everybody, but it is at least a collection, a an attempt at synthesizing the board's opinion and that uh, we will be following up as we get, as we kind of, you know, coalesce on something. I think there'll, there'll be enough time in his own writing of of the broader opinion uh, to to incorporate future drafts, but I didn't want uh, I could also say, look, you know, we'd rather just like not send you anything until we have a a synthesized opinion that everyone agrees on. Uh, so it's honestly, it's up to you guys, whatever you feel comfortable with. Uh, I'm happy to try to throw out an early draft on February second, on February first, and then uh, then when we meet again and everyone's had a chance to review and we get feedback and we go do some iterating, we just publish that on as we go, or I could just wait and say like, look, you know, we're moving as fast as we can, but we're not gonna have a synthesized uh, official perspective, even a draft one until.
I like your first option.
Okay.
Yeah.
And at least we've got something.
Okay.
And we're, and that's gonna be before our public meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
It 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 makes sense, yeah. And I think that you got the information from us when we were doing all of our reports of what I guess our feelings were from.
Well, importantly, I'm gonna be drawing a lot from what you're gonna be delivering on the twenty, on the twenty seventh of the.
You know, we can't, didn't we just say we can't meet on the twenty seventh because of that, the the conflicts or this sort?
Well, we're not gonna be able to.
Well, um, I know I could be wrong. Can you check me on this, Jonathan? But I think the open meetings law allows you to meet over Zoom and I think the word is extraneous circumstance or in emergency. So if you need to.
Yeah, but a a quorum still has to be physically uh present at village hall or some other accessible location.
Publicly accessible location.
We can't meet over here? No, huh? The small room? No.
Yeah, she just sent that email out today.
I missed that.
Yeah.
You get to see everything.
Um, the court, I think, is using both rooms. I think there's gonna be like a a.
Over here or?
Okay. Someone else at the other one.
Well, I'll say this, like, I think we should still have a goal of sharing with each other digitally a close to final draft of our opinion, of each of our opinion by the twenty seventh. That, because that was our goal before. I think we were hoping to have, to be able to discuss them there. Um, and uh uh I guess there's a question, like, you mentioned that there, are they done by eight? Is that, is that a hard stop or do they, they go?
I asked the court clerk. She said seven thirty eight. Um, but I think she's not guessing, but you know, guaranteed. You wanna meet later?
Well, might be better than nothing, but. Yeah.
Yeah.
I I I would like to, progress is progress, but if we start at nine.
Yeah.
I I don't think starting at nine, if you would be like starting at, if we could start at eight, then that would be.
Okay, yeah.
Well, the other option is we have that planning board meeting on sixth um Thursday at seven. Is there a way for us to get here? Like, it's gonna be the public meeting. Should we try to get here at six and do it an hour before the the that meeting? And if.
Oh, six is only for the D G I S.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, we're, it's only for the D G I S, but we could meet before for an hour. And then if we have to pick it up after the meeting, I guess.
It's big, you know what's gonna happen. Everyone, like, anyone who wants to come.
Wants to get here early, I guess. But you'll be getting this other room too, right? We're allowed to be in the smaller room while people.
Thing is, is like, there, like, we, we would be meeting in public, like, like, it would be a uh this is just a matter of getting FaceTime with each other. It's mad, like, there is a, there is a obligation of of the meeting being public. So um.
I'm just trying to think of another date if the site, if the, if the third doesn't work. And I know that we we have that thing coming up on six, so.
The only, I mean, this is like a stretch. The only other suggestion, I don't know what, how the town of Phillips Town doesn't, but if it's possible, if you guys want to meet up the street, let's see if they have a room available for that same time and day, considering the most close ring is a part of the town. I'm just saying. Jonathan.
Uh, Phillips Town Town Hall is not in the village, is it?
It is not.
Yeah, you should meet in the village then.
Could we meet at Butterfield Library?
Yeah.
The library open at seven P M?
Yeah, yeah.
Mondays, it's open late. Mondays and Wednesdays, it's open until eight.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I could meet at the, I could meet at uh Butterfield. I don't know it well enough, know where we would be.
We should, we should.
We call, we, we, I can call and say, hey, can we do this?
I can talk to my neighbor Vanessa. She works there.
Oh, I have Vanessa's problem.
Yeah, so I could try and see if I can talk.
Not by any way, huh?
Oh, yeah, you're very, very inconvenient. Yeah.
Throw a rock with a note on it in the window.
Finally. I can still be at home and you have four.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you like, right there?
What?
No.
Literally a big story.
We could, yeah, you could be on your wife. Use my watch.
All right. Uh, okay, so the main, I guess, like, as long as we can affirm that uh, by Friday, the the the, uh, next Friday, uh.
Tomorrow?
Oh, wait, Friday, that's Monday.
That's right.
Yeah. So I need, like, if we get a firm, it might end tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll talk to her, but I don't know if 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 she's gonna have to go to them or if we should just stop up there. I'll try to do the best I can to to get an answer. I will, I will contact her. And if you want to do the same too.
Just, let's, let's be in touch tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll go and and um find Joanna Rosman.
Okay, yeah, if you want to do that, and I'll just mention Vanessa and then we'll probably just pick it up and see. Um, now, could we go over what specifically you want from the members for this meeting?
Yeah, so everyone has started to compile their questions. Um, I expect that, like, if you have one additional ones that have popped up, you should add them. Mostly just, um, I'm happy to do the compile step, which is like get, kind of get those into a good structure, into a single document.
Um, should it be focused on our area alone?
Or should it be anything, anything?
Anything we've heard from any of the reports that came out or that we've read in some.
Anything you feel confident is a useful and relevant question to have answered.
Okay, perfect.
Um. And uh, you know, things that would be helpful are, like, if you're referencing a portion of the document, try to be explicit about what you're referencing. Um, and then the other is um just write pros about you know, some comments about how you, like, what is your read of the project, the value to the to the village, villagers, the risks that are that are present, the ways in which you feel like the proposal is um, missing important information or presents, you know, um good opportunity and value to villagers. Um, really, you think of it as like, um you don't, it doesn't have to be comprehensive or sweeping, but I'm gonna try to take everybody's kind of pros commentary and synthesize it together as like, okay, you know, we're a we're a Hydra beast of thoughts, but here is like a kind of coherent uh, comment, uh, comments of concerns that the board has. Um, and so if you could have a draft of that, like relatively final draft of that, that's what I'll, that is what I will take forward. And we'll, and we'll share them with each other. We'll talk about it to make sure everyone kind of understands whatever, where everyone's coming from. But uh, the goal would be to let me spend basically next week, taking those uh, taking those individual comments and kind of trying to consolidate them into comments. So the the commentary, I think, is what's important. Most critical for me to share with Ted early uh, or when, when, when he's, when, when the mayor has asked, because that's that's gonna help inform his own research and and justification for for stuff, so. Uh. And again, like, this won't be final, like, soon as we meet again and you have a chance to tell me the ways in which I didn't capture your thoughts or feelings, then we'll just revise it and we'll send a new, new version, so. Um. Okay.
Did anybody watch um, participate in the two Zooms that the?
I was in the city. My, my wife watched.
I didn't, over the line.
I watched for ten minutes and they were still like trying to get themselves organized. And I knew that the um, those meetings would be reported. So I'm gonna look at the recordings so that I can fast forward through some things. So I was just curious if anybody had any.
I I, one of my wife described, it's probably about what you would expect.
Oh.
Uh, so.
Okay.
You know. Uh, yeah, I think they, there was some connectivity issues and and then they were trying to let public officials speak first.
Yeah.
The people uh, didn't, um, you know, as you would expect, some people didn't understand what they were signing up in for. And some people signed in as public officials.
Oh, God.
You know, the chaos that comes with. Yeah. Uh, okay. All right, so uh, you're gonna figure out for Monday, uh, the two of you are gonna.
This coming Monday, right?
Yes.
Monday, we're trying to do seven to eight o'clock, right? Trying to get a room for that.
Seven, seven to eight or seven to nine, whatever, whatever. All right, good, right, yeah.
He said eight.
Yeah.
So did you want to start at seven? You want to start at six thirty?
I could start earlier if folks want to start earlier.
Let's start, let's start with what's available.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Then you, you, you probably have the hardest time to start earlier, right?
I can, I can even win, right? That's my wiggle.
But we can also get a form and we could start if we have to. Like, if they say you have to be out by seven thirty, then we gotta start at six thirty.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
What we can get.
All right. Okay, cool. Uh, that's it. Uh, Abigail, anything else? Do you, oh, you have a is this the public hearing for the?
One last question though. Do you want us, like we did the last time, to send an email that afternoon or something prior to us meeting that has this information that you're looking for? Is that helpful?
Share it, yeah, share it as soon as you can.
Yeah.
No pressure though, like, if you don't, if you don't have it ready until Monday.
I sent one this afternoon where I turned some of my just sort of notes into questions.
Yeah.
Did you?
I haven't looked at, I haven't looked at it yet.
If you could by tomorrow sometime.
Okay.
Yeah, if you say that's a good format, then.
Yeah.
Okay, we can follow.
Yeah, I can, I can take a look at it.
Okay.
Uh.
All right, that's it.
So we have one last thing that we can go. Um, so we have the, we give you another civil hearing for um, regarding the Hudson Highlands, Fuertreil, draft, generic environmental impact state D G E I S, Thursday, February sixth, village hall. Yeah. Um. This is, this notice is what we're, is basically what our framing to the public, what is, what is about, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish here? Um. So the planning board will consider the proposal by the H S F D D I S. Things we're focused on, um on the chapters three L two M. Um. I think what I would, rather than call it specific chapters here, Abigail, I would just say. Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I put the deadline.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I mean, I can probably edit it for the next posting, but um.
Sorry, I thought, I thought you, I've, you've put this up for us to review.
Uh, I mean, I know you had it on the agenda, but yeah.
All right, well, uh.
But if you'd like to make a suggestion, I can edit it for the second um publishing, not for the first, because that one already went out.
Okay. Um. I would, I would probably have changed uh, the plain words focuses on um uh, chapters uh, is is on portions of the proposal that relate to uh, that like, uh, the impact of the village most directly.
South corridor?
Yeah, the, the, it is. And even even within that is like, yeah, the ones that impact the village. Uh, and um uh it might be worth adding, just like the, the, the planning board. Uh, two things that I think are important context to add. One is just to remind people that, and I'll do this at the, when we start the actual hearing, that um uh, the planning board does not have a, a, have a, a Jonathan, what did you say? Jurisdiction for approval or does not have.
Right, yeah, just acting in an advisory capacity.
Planning board is only acting in advisory capacity. It has no approval, has no approval authority, I guess, yeah. Uh. Uh, but uh, is seeking, but even as such, that is seeking um, uh, perspective from the public on the proposal. And that, and that way, I think that gives the, that frame, that hopefully frames it for folks. I don't, I would hate for people to come and and think that, like, you know, this is a, we're, we're deciding, we're deciding that, you know, that this is, whether or not this is a thing that should exist or not.
Well, that's why I put proposal and not application. The the template says application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I appreciate you, you making that distinction for sure. Um, but I think this, this will add, hopefully, for anyone who bothers to read it, uh, we'll add some additional context. And and I'll, I'll add that context before we start the meeting, so we.
One, one person will get the, will read the ad and then tell fifteen people that there's a, there's a meeting about Fuertreil.
Yeah.
That's when people will show up.
Yeah.
That's what's gonna happen.
Well, you know, well, you know, we, we all get our turn at the wheel. It's, get to find out how, how, uh, how, how it goes. Uh, all right, that's it. Uh, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.